I'll try, I'll have that.
Like you don't have to worry, everybody's here, it's coming. Sorry. Thank you for coming to the Work Council for April fourteenth. Um, we have several agenda items to discuss tonight. And we'll start with the first one, which is second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two to rezone approximately point eight one five acres of real property located at seven thirty-eight East Main Street and the intersection of South D Street and East Main Street from residential, which is our seven point five, to neighborhood commercial NC. Is there any discussion about this? The second reading. We voted on it and talked about it, so. Any questions?
I have a discussion. Um, could I ask Mr. Hilliard some questions because I'm confused about some things?
Daniel, could she ask?
That's the applicant.
Yes, he's the applicant.
Sure.
Could you come to the podium, please? I voted no last month, and it was mainly more of a gut than anything. But I've done research and then I've got some questions that's come up. Uh, in the, um, initial, I believe it's the initial planning commission minutes back in November, um, and this is per the minutes of the meeting, it says Mr. Hilliard's public comment was that he wanted to change the zone to be able to utilize the parcel to its full potential. So what did you mean by that?
Well, I'll have to say I apologize for my ignorance, but I didn't know that there were different ways to, um, get rezoning done.
Okay.
The, the neighborhood commercial is exactly what I was wanting, but it just came up as commercial.
Okay.
And the only thing was that, um, we had had, um, a couple, one lady had a wedding dress shop. She wanted to live and work out of it.
Okay.
And so that's, that's what.
All right, and I've heard you say a couple of times, or maybe about three times, that, you know, you did not want the place torn down, um, that you want it to be, um, something like maybe a medical office or CPA, or, I don't know, you maybe used it real estate, I'm not exactly sure, so that's what you're looking for.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is, why is the reason you chose neighborhood commercial over office institutional?
Well, I don't, is that another, another way to do it? I don't know.
Yeah. Uh, well. Yeah, there's, there's two options, and based on what he's saying, I just feel like he has applied for the wrong zoning because from the conversations I've heard him say, it sounds like it needed to be office institutional and I wanted to make sure he understood the difference.
But i- if someone comes in, wants to buy it for a wedding shop, they want to retail. So it may limit the, the use of retail on that, so you have to be, I mean, it's right next to a general, a, a general commercial area. And of course, backside is residential. So you want to be able to give some latitude to do some things in there. If he just picks office institutional, then he could lose a lot of sales.
But from, based on what he's been saying, it sounds like office institutional being a more restrictive as to what would go there would satisfy his needs, and I'm just wondering if.
Say you wanted to buy it, okay? And you say, well, I don't want office institutional, I want to do something else, and you have to come back in, you have to do office institutional. He, he can dictate what he wants, what he wants in his mind, but he can't dictate what I want to do there, or someone else wants to do there.
Okay, and see, I think this is where, now, what is your understanding? When you go to sell this property, are you thinking that you're going to tell the person, you can't put a convenience store here, you can't put a mom and pop grocery shop?
Well, that'd be up to you, wouldn't it?
No.
Wouldn't it have to be rezoned again?
If that, no, if, if, um, convenience store is under neighborhood commercial, but it's not under office institutional. So I'm.
He, he wants to sell it. If I told him just office institutional, and someone wanted to buy it and rezone it, they can always do office institutional, they can always do an office institute there, right? And no, really, no institute's going to be, it's basically office. Okay, if someone wants to retail there, depends on the type of retail, then they have to upzone it. So right now, we're zoning it, we, we zoned it to G, G C because it's on ninety-three. And so they said, yeah, it makes sense to do this as a high use next to Merck's Tower. Merck's Automotive, so they came back, so.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yes, ma'am.
So you can sell that property and somebody can come tear that house down and put up a convenience store. I just want to make sure you understand that's what might happen.
I'll have control over it for the first sale. The rest will be up to the committee.
Uh, what committee?
This, this one.
No, no.
The one we.
That's one I want to make sure you understand.
He, he can de-restrict it if he wants to de-restrict it, to leave that, leave that building up, but I'll use myself as an example, if I want to buy that building and I want to tear it down, there's nothing you can do about it.
Exactly.
Even if it's office institutional.
Exactly.
The only way you can keep that building the way it is, is to keep it the way it is. So if you want to save that building, then you're going to keep that building. If you want to sell the building, then you sell the building. That's, that's what you want to do.
Yeah.
I believe neighborhood commercial was suggested to Mr. Hilliard.
It was, this is our second reading.
And when he came before us earlier asking for general commercial, some of us said, well, we don't want to do that, but if you'll apply for neighborhood commercial, you might get it.
Yes, ma'am, pretty much. Uh, Maria?
Yes.
Would, would neighborhood commercial be in keeping with the general character of the, of that area?
Uh, uh, I mean, the area's transitioned, okay? It's a busy street, it's not going to get less busy. No one's going to want to live on that road to be a house, so he's got to change it to some, somewhat commercial, from general commercial to office institutional. Um, if he sells it and I want to put my civil engineering business in there, I can do that as an office, I don't have to touch the building, I have to bring it up to some codes, of course. But if someone wants to buy that, and, and I'm not saying it won't get torn down, but if someone goes in and tries to buy that building for three hundred, how much you pay, I'm just saying, what?
I think it.
Five? They'll probably want to tear that building down. They'll probably use that building. Because it doesn't make sense to buy that piece of property at six hundred thousand dollars for half, less, less than half an acre. Not right now. And that's what, that's what the thought was back then. Sooner or later, it could go, it could go G C, it may go G C, but it may be ten years down the road. And then they may say, look at the building and say, it's worth selling it, or it's not worth selling it. It's a matter of what the, what the market will hold, will dictate. So, but right now, if he wants to keep that building there, he sells it to me, I'm not going to take him saying, keep that building there because it's, say, say the building, and, and it's in good shape, but what if it's not in good shape? What if you go in there and you find termites and all these other problems happening, it doesn't make code? Same situation happened to me. I was going to buy a house and up, and upfit it, but it didn't work, so I had to tear that building down. Wasn't, not as nice as that one there, but I had to tear that building down because it just didn't work physically. Layout didn't work out, handicap didn't work out, so I had to tear that building down so I could do all those things. Luckily, back then, it was nineteen eighty, nineteen, excuse me, two thousand something, it was a lot cheaper to do. This one here is, is, it'd be probably some work to get that, I don't know if building, you know, building official will say the same thing. It's going to cost them some outfit. But it, the bone's good, and you can work with, you can work with a building like that.
Well, I'm really concerned because the way he's been talking, that he wants it to be either like a medical office, a real estate office, or CPA. It just seems to me that office institutional would have been a better fit because it's going to be a little, well, more restrictive, and I'm going to quote that you put in your minutes from, for the other one. It says, "The proposed zone, O I, is the easily most restrictive commercial zone. Allowed uses includes professional and medical offices, banks, beauty shops, staycares, et cetera."
Right. Less retail, but ultimately, it's his call who he wants to sell it to, but whoever he sells it to is going to dictate what they want to put in there. I mean, as much as he wants to, it's an old home place. I mean, it's emotionally, it's emotionally attached to him, but at the same time, if you sell it, it's going to go to whoever wants to sell it.
Justin, just to, um, fill you in at the initial planning commission meeting, when it was originally general commercial, there were people that attended, and you're looking more at the, the homes behind it, and those are the neighborhoods. So that's what the, a little bit of the dilemma is, and so that's when Mr. Hilliard was, um, kind enough or thoughtful enough for the neighbors in the area to, uh, review the options and then come up with neighborhood commercial. And obviously, is to, to Mario's point, um, regardless of whether, I mean, he's, uh, Mr. Hilliard's already gone through the process, um, whether Mr. Hilliard sells it as neighborhood commercial and somebody else wants to change the zoning, they can come back in here and do that. So it's not as if whoever purchases the home is stuck with neighborhood commercial. And once he sells it, he has no say in what happens to the property.
And you have to keep it office institutional, they still may tear that building back. It's a, it's a difficult choice for him because it's, like I said, it's a whole home state.
But I'm just wanting to make sure that he gets the zoning that he desires and not a suggestion from someone else. So how do you feel about it? You still okay with neighborhood commercial?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that's all that you need to hear. Thank you so much.
Anything else? We'll go next then to the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three to redistrict the six single-member election districts for the election of city council members based upon the twenty-twenty decennial census. So, Tom, I think you wanted to.
Yes, ma'am, here's, here's the map of the new suggested redistricting from RFA Columbia. Alan Anderson is a young lady that's been helping us do this, spent a lot of time on it. Um, you can see from the shape, it's a lot more symmetrical, I guess you would say, or more concise, I'm not sure exact word, but it's a lot cleaner. These are the numbers. If I can get it to advance. There we go. Hard to see, but bottom right-hand corner, the, the numbers for each district are pretty even at thirty-eight. Fifty-eight? You got good. One's slightly above, the rest are slightly below, it's right, they're all within five percent, it's a lot cleaner. Going back to the map, I've talked to, um, Dr. Sams with the county, and she is, uh, and her team, G I S, has, has told me. We passed this on first reading today, have the hearing and second reading on May twelfth. That gives them plenty of time to come in at that point. They will add the areas that have been annexed since twenty-twenty. I thought we could get them on this map here, but you cannot add, you cannot vote on this map because this map is based on these numbers, and that's the numbers they have from twenty-twenty. They don't know the current numbers that have been annexed since then, so you have to vote on this map with these supporting numbers if, if you decide to do this. And so, May twelfth, we can revote. Or second vote, and it gives them plenty of time to go through, add those areas that have been annexed. They will then send out, um, new, um, voter registration cards to those that have been affected. And only those who have been affected in time to, um, obviously in time for the vote in November, but also people who have been moved, that want to run for any office, they will know where they are at that point, so, um.
You said too, they weren't, they weren't changing polling locations.
She said they will not, that the polling locations will not change because of the wards that you've been assigned to.
Did Dr. Sams, or the person that's helping you with, or the one that's coming up with the map, is there a number, probably, of people that are affected that will be changed?
They did not give me that number. I don't know, I don't think they will know until Dr. Sams runs the data.
My thought is, because this only affects the city of Eastlake, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Nothing else. Of course, I know that's that map, I don't know if any other, um, races would be affected. I don't know if they were doing anything throughout the state. It's the thought that with this being an election year, uh, for people that would be running for wards two, four, and six, I think most people that have run elections have downed and made people in the city, aren't even familiar with the wards. Yeah, Justin, I see you shaking your head, and the, the one other critical notation is that when you look on your voter registration card, instead of the wards being a single-digit designation, um, because I guess they don't want to get the congressional and the House, uh, numbers confusing, what they do is instead of it being wards one, two, three, four, five, and six, it's eleven, twenty-one, thirty-one, forty-one. So that makes it even more confusing for people. So if you get this, and you're, get it in the mail, and they're not familiar with what ward, and you, and you hear that there's an election for wards two, four, and six, why not ward twenty-one? It's, I just, I would just have, um, a little hesitant seeing that doing that this year before the election.
The one possible drawback to that is if, so you, you're saying to vote on the existing board map, is what you're suggesting. So one possible drawback is if someone runs for an office that, and wins, that's in the current map, but would not be in this map in the same ward, then they would, RFA would have to go back and redraw the entire thing based on the current location of the members. So that would just set us back again until they were to redraw.
I think in the documentation, the only reason that you would not vote on this is if you didn't have time to get it completed, and you've done that. So I don't see any reason to stop it. And maybe the city could start doing news blasts on Facebook about, there's going to be some changes made.
Yes, ma'am, but we'll have the hearing on the second reading. If it passes first reading, then we'll have a hearing and, you know, that, and we've got, we've got maps, of course, in, in the lobby here. We're going to put them in the lobby at, um, Parks and Rec. Try to put them in the library, try to put them out in different places so people can see them.
Did, did I understand you to say that, that Dr. Sams said that the polling where people vote would not change?
That's what she said. Yes, sir.
That just seems incredible to me, because like I, I currently represent like going up there to that pink little cutoff. And, yeah, that just seems.
I think they're based on your address, not necessarily your ward, maybe. Because where, where we vote, there are like three or four different precincts that vote at one place. So if I move, if I move precincts, like if I move two streets over, it would still be encompassed in those three that voted at one place. I think.
I think the only thing that would affect the location is if a, a church or a location that was
Stopped, yeah.
It didn't want them to vote there, then it would have to change. But I think the intent from the county is everyone stays in the same voting location.
Okay, and in the, in the, um, in the ordinance, is, I just want to make sure it's okay. It says, like past tense, we held a proposed redistricting. I just want to make sure, uh, that we held a proposed.
Yes, sir, that's, um.
Public hearing in the, but it's May twelve.
Correct.
Is that, okay.
Yes, sir.
By the time it's finalized, we will have.
Awesome.
Did Dr. Sams say how they're going to do those annexed properties? Is it based on the permits that's been formed or the number of lots?
They will, they will put the annexed properties into the ward they're adjacent to. They don't, they don't know how many are in there as well. They will not, Dr. Sams, you know, the county is not going to try to balance the numbers, rebalance. They're just going to add them to the adjacent wards that they're beside.
Daniel has something to add, my question.
Just a brief comment, that I, I would have some concern about postponing the approval, uh, of the ordinance because we're a little, we're a little late getting this done because the decennial census was done, you know, several years ago. And I think to keep our elections in compliance with the Voting Rights Act, uh, we need to, I would recommend that we go ahead and move forward with adopting the redistricting so we make sure we, the city is not subject to a, a challenge from a voting rights standpoint. That's all.
Anybody else have anything?
Yes, ma'am. So we will vote on this map, but it is subject to change.
The, the wards will not change, they will be, the areas that have been annexed will be added to it, so the numbers, and the numbers in the chart are the, is what this map is based on.
So annexed areas will be added to those wards?
To the wards they're adjacent to. Yes, sir.
Any questions? Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh four to rezone approximately point three four acres of real property located at two one three, two thirteen Pelzer Highway, General Residential GR two, to Office Institutional O I. Any discussion?
This is the map, Mayor, that, uh, two thirteen Pelzer Highway, right there, and basically at the center of the map with the green bluish-looking box around it.
I had some of the same questions that I saw were answered in the notes from the planning commission, so I'm good. Anybody have any discussion or question?
I think the zoning that, um, the guy has picked is appropriate for that area. If you go down past that house, um, you know, you're going to hit, uh, General Commercial, we call it some angles, the property next to angles, um, I think the assisted living is general commercial. Then across the street, oh, she got the school. Then if you go up, there's a Mexican restaurant, it's neighborhood commercial. You've got a car lot that's, um, general commercial. The check cashing place is neighborhood commercial. So it fits right in. He, the guy has a small space because I believe it's not quite a half an acre. And I understand he's going to put a medical spa in there, which doesn't, you know, have a lot of traffic all at once. You know, my concern was, did he want a Starbucks? Well, that would be a nightmare on that road. Starbucks driver. Then road with the, traffic on the road would be rude. So, um, I think this is probably appropriate in this area.
Additional comments or questions?
Talbot Robinson, law firm handled the closing with Dan Brecken against LLC on this property. It was a routine real estate transaction. I do not represent Dan Brecken or his LLC in this request for rezoning. I do not have any ongoing business relationship with him, and I do not have, um, interest in the outcome of this vote.
Thank you for, thank you for clarifying that.
Is there anything along that section that we're looking at, up and down through here? I mean, is anything else?
Looking at?
Is office institutional, yeah, I think it's office institutional.
There was nothing that was office institutional within that stretch of property, like the CBS town.
Yeah. It's all, it's all town home and, and it's surrounded.
Town home, is it? There's a house upstairs. I think traffic's really bad right there.
Yeah.
Is that? Answered, now, I don't know if that answered your question.
Kind of sort of, I mean, it's a smaller shot of just, just, you know, all the, I mean, all these miles, all this over here. I'll do this, but they used to have, you know, townhomes all the way through here.
Mm-hmm.
And all, I would have thought I might have been an officer with their things there or something.
David?
Uh-huh.
Those aren't townhomes behind that property, those are single-family homes.
Okay.
The ones at the top are up above.
Yeah.
You good?
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? Okay, we have then next, the reading of resolution twenty twenty-five oh six to reappoint Jane E. Sterling to a two-year term as Associate Municipal Judge for the City of Eastlake. Do you like to come up, Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
Snow?
Madam Mayor and Counsel, I appreciate, I've tended to address you regarding these reappointments. Uh, actually, Judge Sterling's reappointment's not come up until May, but, uh, and what we have been doing this past couple of sessions is trying to get everybody reappointed so they're all reappointed in the same year. And, uh, just a little bit about Judge Sterling, I apologize for him not being here, although I'm sure he's busy. Uh, he is a practicing attorney in the City of Eastlake and has been for ten years or longer. Uh, he's been Associate Judge here for five years, and I depend on him heavily for presiding. Uh, he, he and I share those duties, and he is, uh, he's proven himself to be, uh, reputable and honest and fair, and, uh, I do believe that he would serve us well at a continuing status as municipal judge.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Judge? If you want to stay up there, then the next item is reading of resolution twenty twenty-five oh seven to reappoint Tina Galworth to a two-year term as Assistant Municipal Judge for the City of Eastlake.
And, uh, Judge Galworth is here tonight, she, I forced her to come up here, she didn't want to come, so. She is, she is the greatest asset, in my opinion, that we have. She has over thirty-five years of experience in the court system. I stole her from the City of, City of Central, and I use that term right square on, because I did. She is, she is taking the opportunity here to, to work with us, and she serves as a city clerk, uh, Mad Municipal Clerk of Court, as well as an Assistant Judge, and, uh, she is invaluable to the, to the city. I would hate for her to, I, I hate the day that she retires, I hope I retire before she does, to be honest with you, so. Uh, but she is, uh, she's, uh, does an excellent job, and I feel honored to have her and to ask you to reappoint her.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you for coming. And then finally, we have FY twenty-six, operating budget update. We have a status update from our administrator, Mr. Couch, on where we are with that.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Just want to, uh, this is a working draft budget as it says there. This is not balanced by any means. You see the one in red very top is the general fund, it's not balanced, we're still working on that. All the other funds are balanced with what, what we plan on doing. And we'll talk about, I'll give you, I'll give some options that we're thinking about doing to balance that as we go forward. But again, this, we're not voting on this tonight, this is a, just to bring you up to speed on what we've done so far. Um, and going back to that, we, we started out about seven and a half million dollars out of balance on the general fund to begin with, and we've gotten it down to, to one point four, you see there. Personnel, you may remember in our budget retreat, we, I think we brought it up, about twenty-two percent uh, increase on our insurance rates was the quote. We were able to get that down to fourteen, just over fourteen there, which is a big savings for us. We plan on doing a three percent COLA, which is a, right at the average for, uh, last year. Retirement, our contributions and employee contributions, our contributions haven't changed. We've got additional, thirteen additional positions.
We're asking for.
That have been asked for, and you can see, see them there. If you remember, they were, fire department wanted twelve. We've got six in this budget. We've got the one coordinator, events coordinator, police officers, that was two on patrol, directed patrol, two traffic patrol, a city planner. Just FYI, City of Clemson has three people that do what our city engineer, city planner does. And so with our growth, we're bigger than, bigger than Clemson, we're growing, and we need, we just need more help in that department. Same thing with the building inspector. Once the moratorium is passed and, and things start picking up with subdivisions or whoever's wanting to come in and, and grow. Building and we start growing, we're going to need more inspections and other building inspectors. So we, you never know when that's going to happen. We've got this budget for the last half of, of the budget here, starting in January. That's the new positions. We're growing, and we just, we need to, we need the help. Some highlights, it includes the per contract, fire department has the fire protection fee that the county pays. No increase to the stormwater, no, the grass clippings. We want to go thirty-five to forty-five dollars a year there. At thirty-five, we lose money on that. And shouldn't have, in my opinion, we don't need everybody else subsidizing those who want to use grass carts. I think the grass carts need to stand on their, stand on their own. So we're trying to bring that up to what it costs us to do it. Roll cart fee is not a much of an increase, sixty to sixty-five dollars. For those who have three roll carts, it'd be a hundred and thirty dollars is the recommendation. Other fees going up as well. This, this budget that you saw with the numbers includes a three-mill increase, which, you know, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per mill is an estimate right now. So if you wanted to go four mills, that would cut another hundred, another hundred and thirty thousand dollars off of the, the delta that we're trying to close up. Here's a, just some, from information on seventy-five and a half mills, two hundred thousand dollar a home, about two hundred and seventy-six dollars. And I ran your averages, all the council members' averages together, and you're paying roughly two hundred and eighty-six dollars, a little bit more than the two hundred thousand dollar average here. So yours would go up about, on an average, about twenty-five. Uh, somewhere in there, if we did three mills, is my guess. You can see on the millage rates, we're the second lowest in the county.
What is the maximum mill we could go up to?
Ralph, do you remember that number?
We don't have the official number yet, but part of it is based on.
You may want to speak into the microphone. Somebody at home might want to know the answer to that question.
We do not have the official number yet from SC Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. They give it to us in May. But that, the piece that is missing is the population growth. So I would guesstimate that we could probably do twelve to fourteen max.
Do you, do you know how many we'll roll off if we don't do them this year? Because it's a three-year maximum. You keep them on there, correct?
Right, it's a three-year accumulation of the maximum increases. I can't say I remember off the top of my head on that number.
We'll research that and try to get that number. A lot of fees, the building fees here, a lot of them are new. Some of these are old ones. We're just updating them. Any of the fees that you see coming up, we've taken, checked out the local area, upstate, what are people charging? And these are not the top. These are middle, middle of the road fees for building and code.
Why not cushion a little bit more to match the surrounding areas?
Well, it's the middle of the surrounding areas. It's not the lowest. It's not the highest. And we could, we could raise it. That might be part of the delta, changing the delta. But we want to make it, make sure it's fair to, to all, all concerned as well.
What's the moving fee?
Moving fee. Tor?
Uh, for moving a.
Ralph's like, I had to go, you have to go.
So moving fee would apply to moving a mobile home.
Any other?
Possibly moving a house.
Any other questions? Why? Tor is up there. Thank you.
I'd like to add something based on, on Donna's question. Before, we did extensive looking across, not only just the upstate. We covered all of our area except for, we left Greenville out because they're kind of an outlier. We looked at some other areas that were similar to our size and right above us, right below us. And that's where we came right at about mean of what the others are. So we didn't want to do too much at once, but it could certainly be revisited again. It's like a lot of other things, it hasn't kept pace where it should have.
Well, it seems to me that we're going to have to bite the bullet because we can't figure stuff out the whole. We still have a constant turnover in the police department, correct? And that's an issue. That's an issue that costs the city money, and it needs to be rectified. I thought it was going to be rectified last year, but apparently it wasn't.
Well, last year we, we did, you know, the year before, we had the pay and comp study, and we, so last year's budget, we tried to get on that study and get move people across to the right, which is increase in pay as, as best we could with the budget that was allowed. And that's, the three percent we're showing as a COLA is, is really the, is for COLA. And we're still going to look at the other areas to get people on the pay and comp study as much as possible. Still increase their pay, but we don't know what that number is yet.
What would you support millage increase to get that done?
I would support, you know, matching the other areas. I mean, we, we're going to have infrastructure problems, and we just don't have the money to fix it. And just raising these little piddly amounts is not digging us, getting us out of the hole.
How do the rest of you feel about that? How big of a bullet are you willing to bite?
It's not our decision. I think it needs to be going out to the public.
Well, we can, we can have, we can have the public, we can, we can pop more millage into this. I don't know if we can meet. I think we've talked about, I don't know that there's enough millage to knock off the one point four. I mean, we're talking.
You would need ten mills? Is that about right?
Yeah.
And I don't know if we're allowed to do ten, but we would have to check that number. You're only allowed so many. That's a, that's a hefty bullet. Some other options we're looking at is finances, and we'll come up to the, some capital items here in a minute. We're looking at financing some of those, which is a less payment, but it's, it'd be a yearly payment if we do that on the capital. Also using fund balance to do some of it. It might be a combination of all three. The.
And do we have, not that this would be a significant amount, but when the moratorium ends, didn't the impact fees increase this year?
We increased the impact fees in January based on the COLA that we're allowed to do. We'll do it again this coming January as well. Again, that's not a lot as well.
It's consumer price index.
How often is a food truck inspected, just one time?
Food trucks, how often are they inspected?
They get inspected once a year at the time their business license is up to date, or if they're operating without one, they get stopped.
Did a surprise inspection occasion?
Uh, did one today.
I, I think that's not a bad idea to just pop in and check it out. Fifty bucks is a pretty good deal for a year of food truck.
And it's good for a year.
Yeah.
The other thing while we're on this page, we've added nuisance abatement fees that were not necessarily there before. When we have to go file at the county, we file liens. There's a cost to us there. There's a cost of the paperwork that we have to prepare and everything we've got to do. So we, we've added that in there, and we've filed a great number of liens, and we got more that are coming due that will get filed in the next two weeks, so. Yes, sir.
Tor, if this was adopted, would that, would that mean that the abatements were then bringing in more than the cost of the abatements?
In theory, yes, but that, that's basically to cover the, the work that we have to do to file the liens, yes. So that's plus the abatement is what that is. Whatever it costs, it costs two hundred to cut a yard, plus the hundred dollars.
So that two hundred is the labor involved with?
Yeah, whatever, whatever that bill may be to, to do the abatement of cutting the yard, then plus the cost of us filing it.
Is, is, I mean, does it cost you more for a fourth offense than a first offense?
Uh, that's more of a penalty, if it should be that many times. And that's in a calendar year, so you reset during the next year. I've been doing this almost nineteen years. I've never seen anybody go past two, so. But you got to have it there because somebody will test it. Well, wow.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, some schedule changes there on fees. Again, these are not outrageous. Business license fee changes, these are bringing us in line with what the state recommends. Revenue on the general fund, the numbers on the far right, projected, that's based on where we are now in the current year, extrapolating that out to next year. The biggest increases are the property tax, the sales tax, and the. I think it's the license and permits. Is the bulk of that. Increase that we're projecting. And again, these numbers will change because we, as we go through and prepare the budget, these may go up or down as we get April's payments in. And so it's all, it's a moving, it's always a moving calendar here, a moving. Moving target. That's right. Here's expenditures. Column there on capital, that's really, what we plan on spending is about one point four million on capital. New air conditioner here, police has body cam, some of the things, same things we got last year, but we have to update. Flock cameras, seven new vehicles, public works, the vehicle, software that they use over there in the garage. Utility truck, eight hundred garbage cans. We're growing. That's not just eight hundred new homes. That's a lot of them you have to replace because they wear out. So you have to stay ahead of that. Garbage truck, that's the big ticket item here. It's another sidearm, side loader. But, but we've got the new neighborhoods. We got to serve them. And then as a backup, we have an old rear end, rear end loader for garbage, residential garbage that we can use as a, as a spare when something else is broken. So we want to repair that. Get a lot of, a lot of bang for your buck for thirty-five thousand dollars on an old garbage truck, as you can see, for a new one. Fire department, a lot of gear. That ply movet is the actual trade name for it, I guess. It's actually an exhaust system for the bays to keep the fresh air in there. Boost system for the fire engine, that's a, that's a computerized system to maintain pressures. One new vehicle, one vehicle for the building and code department when we hire the new inspector. Things that we have already cut. Was a barrier system for the police. A lot of things there in the fire department. The biggest thing on the bottom for the fire, you see the hundred and ten thousand dollars for the concrete pad and the three and a half million for the new station. The federal budget has not passed with, that had our grant in there for three million. So there's no need, obviously, we're not going to spend the entire amount to build a fire station. We're hoping to get that back in next year's budget with, with the Senator Graham's office. We've already talked to him about rolling that grant forward. We'll probably try to increase it as well. And then the hundred and ten thousand, that's the pad out there at station two. We're going to do that at the same time that the state and county is doing the roundabout at Canaan Land. And we're going to do our, our work at the same time they are, but with probably with the slowness or the speed of movement on getting that project done. It'll happen the next budget year, so we did, we decided not to budget it now. If for some reason they speed up, we'll come back for a budget to get that pad finished. It's, it needs work right now, but we're going to deal with it as best we can.
Are you still using, I mean, doing the grading of that property over there?
Yes, ma'am. Not, we're not, not in this year's budget. We rolled that forward as well. I'll show you that in a second. Hospitality fund. Look at the bottom there, unfunded, budgeted use of fund balance. A lot, these, these funds, though, you can't mix them. You can't mix the hospitality fund with the general fund. It'd be nice if you could, but you can't by law. So this is five million that we're going to use in the fund balance in the hospitality fund, and we're going to add it to the impact fees. We need some expansion at the soccer fields.
I'm sorry, can you, can you go through that a little bit slower and explain that, that budgeted use of fund? But can you just explain that a little bit more? Because I'm not following.
Yes, sir. The five million.
Yes.
It's, so it's, it's fund balance in the general, in the hospitality fund that's, that's in the bank.
That is in the hospitality fund bank?
Yes, it's in the hospitality fund. We can't, it's by itself. You can't mix it with other funds.
This isn't coming from the general?
No, sir.
Okay.
Hospitality fund stands alone. And so we're saving this money through, over the years, to expand when we needed to, and, and we need to now. So this is, and it's maybe had to be done in phases because we don't know what the total cost is going to be to put the RFP out. But we need new soccer fields. We need new parking. We need, because it's a crowd out there. I don't know if y'all have been out, but it's a mess on heavy days. And so we need to expand out there. So this is five million from the fund balance to help with that. And we're going to use some impact fee money in the, in the hospitality, parks and rec to, to supplement it, so.
Is that, are those impact fees, do those, I mean, is that something that we're voluntarily moving to parks?
It's already in parks.
It's designated, because impact fee is designated first parks and rec, fire, police, and then transportation. There are four categories.
Okay, I thought you were saying that we were, when you said we're going to use some of our impact.
It'll be the impact fee for our parks and rec.
Okay, it's not moving an impact fee?
No, sir. Well, we'll, we'll combine that with this fund balance.
Gotcha.
A few years ago, we borrowed for hospitality bond. This is the money that's left over that was never spent. About four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. These are some of the items we're going to use that on. The Woodside project there, the stormwater project's partial because it, it costs more than, but we're going to spend seventy thousand dollars that we have left in it and add it to just hospitality money to spend it, because the total cost is two hundred thousand dollars for that stormwater project. So. Total facility expansion that we plan on having from the hospitality bond is four point. point six seven seven million. And then, we'll add that to, and it's the second one down, one point three nine that we have in the Parks and Rec impact fee. The other things on there, is that grading for the fire station. Again, we want to show that we've got a skin in the game, that helps us get the grant. Last year, we had a hundred thousand dollars in, we think that was a low, a low estimate anyway. Again, if, if we don't get around to it, if it looks like the grant will be delayed, we'll just delay this again. The, while we're talking about Parks and Rec, the police, the, you've got it in there, we've got it in there this year's budget to fix their training room over there, but the bids came back high, and they're not, there's no way to finish it now between now and June thirtieth, so we're just gonna roll that over into the training room next year. And then a parking lot, we put in for a, a grant from the county to help pave this area back here, and this is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to, to improve that as well, to match it, to get the paving that we need for a parking lot. There's the debt service, we've got one rolling off next year, that's the four hundred and twenty-five thousand lease purchase, if I'm reading it right.
But we're adding, do you remember we're adding?
Platform, fire truck, which has a little bit more, so our debt service is going up. What will impact this is if we decide to borrow money for some of those capital items, that we'll have another debt service added, or if we pay cash, we won't, we'll take it all out of fund balance. But again, we're looking at all those options to decide what we want to do. And that's, that's all I had today. Just wanted to bring you up to date on where we are, what we're looking at, and some of the challenges that we're facing as we try to put the budget together.
Are we gonna have a budget retreat when you get it together? And do you have an estimate, estimate of when?
No, ma'am, there won't, there won't be another budget retreat, the next, hopefully the next thing you see is the first reading of the budget at the May meeting, and then the second reading in the June meeting.
Will you be appearing?
And the hearing will be at the first meeting.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
With that schedule?
With not having a budget retreat to discuss this further? Any more questions? Do we have any project updates?
That's all I have.
We don't have any project updates for the agenda, so we can adjourn if there's a motion.
Well, may I?
Oh, pardon me. Go ahead.
Mayor Talbot, someone put a printout in my mailbox.
Yes.
Planning commissions and boards need space to work, that had, I thought, some very helpful suggestions to us, and the need for city council to appear to be impartial in the process. Thank you.
Okay, did you have something else? Yeah, um, since we had a little bit of confusion on the executive session at the meeting, what was it, two weeks ago, two weeks ago? I know Justin was very uncomfortable with the way it went, and we would like for Mr. Hughes to walk us through the process of the way it should have been done, to see if we were correct or not, and we'll know the next time how to do it. In the executive session? Yeah, we're talking about.
Not the substance.
Not the sub, not the subject. We're talking about the confusion that was at the very beginning, about, how did it start, Justin?
I believe with.
The statement on the.
The language.
The language, yeah.
Yeah.
That no actions would be taken in executive session.
Oh. It said actions may be taken during the executive session. Well, I think that we addressed that to the. I think Mr. Hughes can clear that up if you want to speak to it.
Well, this, this may be better addressed in a, in a memo to council, but I think I'm, to your, I think the question is, I think the agenda, I, I know the language was confusing, it should have said possible action may be taken on items discussed in executive session, and I can't remember what the language was, but it was something a little different, that I think created the confusion. But, in my view, the agenda was, did advise the public that possible action may be taken in executive session, and then coming out of executive session, no actions taken, no votes were made.
There was.
Okay, well.
And I think that's what Justin was, because, it's gonna be hard to say this, um, what was being asked of us, that like a decision needed to be made, and you cannot hold the council during an executive session, and so, when I read, was it the, the state law, it said you come out and then you go ahead and vote yes to proceed or no.
Well, again, I wasn't present during executive session, and I had, I'd have to go back and, and look and, and see, but.
Before the next executive session, we'll need to.
I, I will, I will, I will make sure council is, that we get the process right, that everyone's comfortable with how the process should work. I'm glad to do that.
Thank you, and, and I meant to send you an email, it just slipped my mind on that, but yeah, we'll definitely, it, it's just, I just want to make sure that we're getting everything exactly, you know, as it should be, and that, not just that we're doing the right thing, but also that it's very clear. Because I, I think the, I think the intent, I, I completely understand the intent of how it was going, just some people had reached out to me and said, hey, this looks like you're gonna be taking action in executive session. It did not happen, but the way the agenda was laid out did lead to some confusion.
And I, and I think we, it was a, a meeting on, on short notice, I had a conflict, couldn't be here, so I apologize for that, we'll, but we'll, we'll work on that next time.
Thank you. All in favor of the adjournment? Thank you, guys.